Okay, we'll call the meeting forward. Peter Bryan, please.
My allegiance is the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our, in the middle of the world, with liberty and justice for all.
We will open meeting up to public comment. Okay, we'll close the public comment and we have a special presentation this evening in regards to our audit findings from our auditor Ray Cruzer, CPA PC, and Alec Thorben is here to make that presentation.
Okay, you're up, sir.
Thank you. I have no findings.
Good.
No, the audit went very well. We did our annual reviews of business procedures, internal controls, subsequent testing of transactions, revealed no issues at all. Your business staff is continuing to do an excellent job for the district. Financially, your general fund, overall fund balance remains stable, include your reserves. Everything is fine there, very little change from last year. We did review your budgeting. Budgeting, budget looked like it was well prepared, executed, ninety-seven plus percent utilized. And the other funds, we had no issues at all, especially school on capital projects. And subsequently, we had no audit findings or recommendations. So that's basically in a nutshell. If anyone has any questions on their report, you have to try and answer them.
Anyone have any questions?
Our reserves, and I know the audit committee met and they probably talked to this, but our reserves, how close to the allowable four percent are we percentage-wise?
Um, your fund balance, what specifically is unassigned fund balance? That's what you're looking for, the four percent?
Yes.
Right now, it's a little over two percent.
Okay.
But as we talked in audit committee, there's a, because you have prepaid expenditures where you prepaid your health insurance, that has to be isolated from what they call non-spendable fund balance, because it's already spent.
Okay.
So basically, what happens when the new year hits, Lisa and Carol would take those expenses and then book them, and then the fund balance would revert down to unassigned. It would put you a little over the four percent.
Okay.
So it's a, it's just, the way the state came up with setting aside when you prepaid expenses.
Okay.
So basically, you know, it shows, the unassigned line will show that you're at two point, a little over two percent, but when you add back the non-spendable.
We're closer to that.
You're gonna be over four percent.
Okay, thank you.
Lisa, you know, that, Lisa, this is something Lisa inherited, so we're gonna try to next year maybe not pay, if you pay your insurance bill on July one as opposed to June thirty, then it's not prepaid. So then that all would show as in your unassigned fund balance, which would leave you money to add to reserves.
Thank you.
No problem.
Alex, I know as you read the papers, sometimes with other districts having large amounts of fund balance, what's the consequence of the state if we were to exceed that so-called four percent?
No, if they came in and did an audit, they would tell you, oh, you're over four percent, you gotta, you know, have a plan for it, you gotta do something with it. They can't do anything about it. It's basically taxpayer dollars. I mean, most people, when they have over four percent, you'll, you'll put it in reserves. And you have a lot of room to go into reserves yet, or some of them will use it for a capital project, you know, that type of thing. But we've got, I don't wanna tell you, we got some school like twenty percent.
Right, I was gonna hear, I mean, I know there's other schools that have a lot more, I just, you wanna hover around that four percent.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. We stay out of harm's way.
Yeah, yeah.
The reverse side of it is when you show less than that, then they're gonna call you up and say you're in fiscal stress, and then they're gonna bug you. So always better to have a little extra.
Thank you for pointing that out, because we know, we've been there.
Yeah, yeah. As auditors, we don't really care. We, you know, we're bound to put it, if you were over four percent, we'd have to do a management letter and say that.
Mm-hmm.
That's all we do, we just say it. And we tell you, you know, I have a plan for it, what are you gonna do with it? And you'll come back with, you know, we're gonna, next month, we're gonna put it in reserve, we're gonna appropriate some for a capital project that's coming up, just a plan. But yeah, I've never seen them do anything. I mean, they threaten you more when you don't file your audit report, that they're gonna cut you state age, if you have ten, fifteen, twenty percent fund balance.
Yep.
You know, so.
Best to keep everybody happy.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
And just another quick thing for the other board members that are not on the Support Service Committee, we do have that capital reserve that currently, I believe, we're approaching our sixth year out of ten years, so at some point in time, right now, we have nine hundred thousand we're going into.
Wow.
The capital reserve. We seriously gotta consider if we're gonna move in the direction of a project coming up in the next four years, or if we do not go with a project in that, money has to go back to the taxpayer.
Well, I know tonight we'll review the current project at hand, and this allows us to go beyond that timeframe, right? These are monies in addition to that?
Yeah.
Yes, we already funded this project with the capital reserve, which is in addition to that.
They're always good to have, because every two, three years or whatever, there's always something comes up you need to do, and by funding that, you don't have to go out and borrow when time comes and you're saving a taxpayer dollar.
Absolutely.
Always good to have.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you, sir.
My pleasure. Good to see you all.
You're welcome.
You're well, Alec.
Thank you.
Mr. Bryan, just like to publicly thank Alec and also thank Mrs. Gillick, Mr. Annberg, and her staff, sure, her staff is sort of everything.
It is very.
Clean order, thank you.
Very nice to hear.
Thank you.
Okay, moving forward, acceptance of reports. Be it resolved, Board of Education, upon recommendation of superintendent, approve and acknowledge reviewing the following reports, a board event meeting minutes September tenth of two thousand nineteen, and our internal claim to audit report, June, July, and August two thousand nineteen. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Ed, second by Tom. Discussion? No discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Under personnel. The board elect to take personnel as a block from A through N. Any pullouts, you can let me know, but if we're in agreement, we'll take everything from A through N and a block. We'll have the opportunity for any kind of discussion, but we want to move forward. Okay, can I have a motion to move personnel as a block? Motion by Camille, seconded by Ed. Discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any extensions? So carried.
Mr. Barone, take a moment. So we do have one of our new hires here, Jennifer Paleros here, Jennifer.
Hi.
Welcome. So Jennifer will be taking the place of Diane Moezer, so she'll be shared between Mr. Boyd and Mr. Miller. Okay, and she actually, we've reconfigured transportation office a little bit, so she'll actually be located out of transportation as opposed to here. Okay? And then, Mrs. Linda Moore is here, I believe her family has joined her also. Linda's not, she was up for tenure, she received tenure, she's been in a few different positions, but her present assignment has been in the flex class, and I do have to say that she has done an excellent job in that room, and, you know, it really, that's a special room, you have a special person for the room, and we've got the right person, Mrs. Moore, so congratulations and thank you.
Thank you.
Again, like I always say, granting tenure is an investment in the district, and we're hoping that our investment pans out, and you've earned your career here, Highland Central School District, teaching our children the best of your ability, so you appreciate that a lot. Okay. Good luck, Jennifer.
Thank you.
All right, moving right along now. Student Rep, Bella, you're up.
Hi.
Hi.
So we've had another few successful weeks in the district, now moving into October. In the elementary school, the fourth graders took a trip to Mohang, we had our yearly fire prevention assembly, you know, just get the younger kids into it and knowing like what to happen in case of emergency. The middle and high schools both had spirit week last week, moving into homecoming. The boys' football team won their homecoming game on Friday night, which was exciting. And then we had a homecoming dance on Saturday, which was always fun, so it's been great. Looking forward to October.
Any questions?
Bella, how was homecoming?
It was good.
Good time.
Bella, I appreciate, thank you for reaching out to the elementary and middle schools and making them part of your reports as requested.
Of course.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, the business and operations budget transfers. Be it resolved, Board of Education, upon recommendation, recommendation of superintendent, includes the following budget transfers for the two thousand nineteen, twenty school year, as presented to the board at this meeting. Budget transfer number two-two-eight-one for twenty-three thousand dollars, budget transfer two-two-eight-zero for twenty-seven thousand dollars, budget transfer two-two-eight-five for one hundred thousand dollars, budget transfer two-six-one-five for twelve thousand dollars, budget transfer two-six-zero-nine for one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, and budget transfer two-six-six-one for sixty-five thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Mike, seconded by Camille. Discussion? Everyone's good?
Yeah. They've got backup there.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Budget increase. Be resolved, Board of Education, upon the recommendation of superintendent, schools accept the donations of Jonathan G. Jacobson of the Assembly State of New York, who will need bullet aid in the amount of fifty thousand dollars for purchase and creation of a three-D printer station. Furthermore, be resolved, based upon the recommendation of superintendent, schools, the Board of Education approves the budget increase of fifty thousand dollars. We have the appropriation of fifty and the revenue side of fifty thousand. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Heather, seconded by Ed. Discussion?
Where will that be placed? Over here at the high school here, within, you know, what program?
I don't think we've made a decision of which program is going to be in just yet.
And I, I think it might be multiple rather than just one three-D printer, there's, I think there's multiple.
Probably, they'll be up to, okay.
We'll spread it around.
We'll spread it around a little bit, probably one, you know, elementary, middle, high, yeah. Absolutely.
There'll probably be several months until we.
Yes, it'll take a little time, a little time we can get that.
There are three-D printers that cost that much, but they're used by like Orange County shoppers and those stuff.
Yeah, things like that, at that level, quite yet.
Will that be, have to be supported by any kind of training?
Uh, we actually had tech ser, I think it's called Tech Services EQ here yesterday afternoon, we had the superintendent's conference day, and I met with the K-12 STEM teachers and did some three-D printing printer training, so we're already starting that. You need to work with the printers again.
I certainly would like to take the time to publicly thank Assemblyman Jacobson for, you know, doing this for Highland. He came here last spring, the tour of the building was very impressed, and, you know, we reached out to him and asked what he could do for us, and he came through, so we thank him for his efforts.
Absolutely.
Was this specifically, did we come up with a purpose, or was this just?
Yes.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Budget development calendar for twenty, twenty, twenty-twenty-one school year. Be resolved, Board of Education, upon recommendation of superintendent, approves the budget development calendar for the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one school year as presented to the board at this meeting. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Mike, seconded by Ed. Three months away.
Doesn't exactly roll off the tongue there, does it? I think all of us, when we see that there.
I know.
I remember the movie Twenty Twenty, you know? Yes, I'm a movie star.
Okay, any discussions? January fourteenth will be our first presentation here.
Okay.
Not too long.
No.
How's it looking?
I started already.
Oh, you did?
Oh, you bet I did, yeah. As soon as information comes, I start working on it. Absolutely.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Surplus equipment. Be resolved, Board of Education, upon the recommendation of superintendent, approves the Epson Stylist Pro Large Format Printer and HP Scanjet five-five-nine-zero scanner to be considered as surplus and is disposed in accordance with the district policy in New York State municipal and school law. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Mike, seconded by Camille. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Adoption of the annual independent audit two thousand eighteen, nineteen. Be resolved, Board of Education, of Highland Central School District, acknowledge to receive up and accept the annual regular report of the district auditor, Brandon G. Cruzer, CPA PC, for the school year twenty nineteen, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, and the correct, corrective action plan gives us authorization to file this resolution with the Commissioner of Education. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Tom, seconded by Mike. Discussion?
We've got him in front of us, everything looks good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
Thank you.
Sarah?
All right. I have a few things. First, a little item of homework for board members. I, I, so take one and pass it along. I spoke about this last, the end of last school year, that New York State is requiring sexual harassment prevention training across the board, everywhere. Many of you may have already done it at your workplace. If you could send me a copy of your certificate of completion, if you've already done it, so we can have it on file. If you have not done this yet, we have through the EAP services that we have in district, there is an online webinar. It takes about forty-five minutes, forty to forty-five minutes to do, you can't rush through it. There are a few quizzes in there that you need to answer all the questions correctly before you can get credit, and then at the end of it, you got a certificate that says that you completed the training. Once you've done that, if you can apply that to me, that would be great. So, like I said, I don't, I, I kinda thought some of you probably have already done it, so if you have any kind of certificate and get it to me, we'll just put that in the file, but, um, but if you have not, the, the letter there is just what we just sent out as part of the superintendent's conference day yesterday. We had done in-person trainings at the end of last school year, but we missed some people, and then any of our new employees, they needed to go through and do the webinar yesterday. So there are instructions there for what to do to log on to, to EAP, and then I tried to give you as specific directions as possible with little pictures there to show you what the screen will look like. I didn't get many questions from people yesterday, so I think that the instructions must be pretty self-explanatory, but that is a state requirement, not only for our employees, but anyone who is really connected to the school, so I need you to do that as soon as you can.
If anyone needed to come into the school?
Absolutely.
We could set you up and give you a hand on getting it running.
Yeah, it's, it's not, once you get into the EAP system, it's, it's pretty easy. So that's, that was number one. Number two, Tom and I, and I'm sure he's going to talk about this as well, but we were up at the New York State Council of School Superintendents, NSCA, the beginning of last week, which is a great opportunity for me, I'm able to network with other cabinet level people in New York State, and it's always great to hear just what's, what's happening and what's news in other parts of New York State, comparable sized schools or bigger, smaller, that's very interesting. But you also have, especially at the fall conference, there are many representatives from NICE, from the state education department, so I attended some sessions on new PE standards that were released last week. There are new computer science standards that are draft standards that are going to be released in this, no, those are, drafts are being released, I think, at the beginning of December, with adoption probably in the spring. So that at least gives a little bit more of a guideline to schools about what we need to have definitely from state standards, but that also means that there will be a certification in computer science available. Currently, there is not a computer science certification, so that will be interesting to watch how that process progresses. What he did say was the teachers that we have teaching technology-type classes or STEM-type classes now will be able to get basically a ten-year extension almost on, on their, whatever their certificate might be in, for instance, our STEM teacher is a physics, is certified as a physics teacher, he will be able to get essentially a computer science extension while he's working on taking the few extra classes that he would may need to be officially certified. It didn't sound like, it sounded more like the computer science was going to be a little bit like the seventh and eighth grade extension to an elementary license or the five-six extension. It didn't sound like it was going to be a standalone certification, but one that you could add as a certificate, add to your certificate. So that was very interesting, I hadn't really heard that information.
Sounds like the instructional text certificate.
Yeah, something along those lines, so, but you would have the actual computer science part of it. And then, the keynote speaker on Monday, it was really interesting, he was, he's the founder of Homeboy Industries, which is a game prevention program in LA. His name is Gregory Boyle, he's a former priest, but kind of, he found his work, he was assigned to one of the poorest parishes in LA at the time, and through that, it led him to this, this Homeboy Industries, and, you know, at first, when I was there, I was like, I don't know, gang, that does not relate our world so much, but he really talked a lot about looking at every student and making a connection, and the kinship, finding kinship with our students, and, and his, his phrase was really to go out to the margins and, and find those students and connect with them, and it was, I really enjoyed it more than I have a lot of the presentations I've seen lately, it really touched me, I touched the whole audience, I thought his message was perfect in a time where a lot of students are feeling disconnected for a lot of different reasons, I think it was a good message for administrators to remember that, you know, we can bring them in, and they're, we need to make that human connection on a regular basis, and certainly, it really reinforces the message that we've been trying to send with our students are the priority. So that was, that was great. We also had our first, well, I guess it's our third full-day superintendent's conference day yesterday. We, as I mentioned, we had the, some people working on their sexual harassment training, we had all four STEM teachers meet together, and Carol had brought in a person from his tech industries who talked about the Smartboard suite of, of resources and software that many of them weren't really aware were there, the true capacity of a Smartboard, and then again, talked about three-D printing and Raspberry Pis, which are small programming computer things.
Size of a credit card.
Yes, yes, very small. So they did some training with that, and we do have some of them in district, so it's something that they are gonna be able to use right away. I also worked with the, the K-12 STEM teachers at a high-tech high training last week, Thursday and Friday at Bosse's. It was a great opportunity for them to really dive deeply into the project or problem-based learning model, and really go through the whole process of brainstorming a project, and then, you know, presenting it to, to teachers or to students, and then reflecting on it afterwards. As a, as a group, they had all decided that each of them in some way would introduce, creating a game, a board game or computer game, and really talking about the engineering standards and, and the thought processes that go into engineering and using a game to do that, and then they're hoping to do something towards the end of the year where students get to share their games and have other people play them and critique them and everything, so that was really great. And then I also had two teachers from the high school, social studies and math teachers who are very excited about the project they've come up with, I'm not gonna give you any more information because they're gonna be coming to you with it, but it's a real community-based program, they've already brought in one of the LA teachers as well, so we're excited to, to see that move forward. Superintendent's Conference Day, other work, thank you, Mr. MacIntyre, for attending our guidance plan review committee. They created the agenda, they're gonna be presenting at your next board meeting, they're gonna give you an overview of, of the guidance program, K-12, what they're doing in each building. It was great, you know, I'd read through the plan already, but I still learned a few things that I didn't realize, smaller things that were happening in each building, so that was really good. And then we worked on math benchmarks, again, the PE teachers looked at the new PE standards, they were very excited about them, they really thought they reflected the national PE standards much better than the old New York State ones did, so that was great. And then my last thing, our backpack program is up and running. We have our second meeting of the whole committee tomorrow afternoon, but it's, it's going very well, we had a Stop the Bus event for the homecoming game, we received a lot of donations there. The HSA sponsored that, and they're also sponsoring another Stop the Bus at Hanaford's in Highland this Saturday, so if you happen to be out doing your grocery shopping, they would very happily accept any non-parishable food items, especially those items that are good for kids, so things that they can easily put in the microwave or, or heat up or open themselves, so juices, easy mac and cheese, cup of soup-type things, fruit cups, I think, what's on it, oatmeal, cereals, individual cereal packets, all of that. So we're, we're very happy that we've got that up and running again, and we also have gotten, I'll bring it to the next meeting, donations of backpacks from a few different community organizations as well. Thank you to the whole community for really supporting our students that way.
Any questions for Sarah? Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you. So, Mrs. Dr. Lemick's gonna just turn the computer on. A few things, right, the NSCA's conference, it's always a nice one to get together with your counterparts from around the state, just to network, see what they're doing. We do a few sessions on certainly, you know, student mental health, we, we're looking into, you know, some ideas of monitoring social media, I know that some school districts do do that, we're, we are in that process, just kind of doing, in the research stage, which is the idea that you kind of keep, keep a look on, you know, what some things kids are saying or displaying on social media on the public domain, to see if we can, you know, catch things before, to be proactive. I did attend a session on having difficult conversations with employees, but I, I think I could have given that one a little bit better than the presenter. I'm gonna pass out, here's a hard conference, but this is the, I'd like to go over the PowerPoint that C.S. Arch reviewed with us at the Support Services meeting.
So they gave some. Sorry. Does anyone see how to put it into presentation mode?
You can go to F five. Then. Should be a percent.
No, it's, it's a, so he has.
Boxed, oh. So you have to answer.
Go up and down.
Yeah, fine, you can go right to, so. You can go keep going. Right, so that's the schedule, so here's the background, so again, I'm just gonna go through the background quickly, we know the background, that we've had an eight million dollar project, we went through the scope of the project, so again, this was, these are things we've already done now, I know it's a little small for the people in the audience, but this is the schedule that we. that we adhered to. We submitted to the state back in June, so then on the next slide, it gets into the schedule now. So as I reported back in September at our first board meeting, we went through the expedite review and on September 17th, we were told that our projects were all been approved at the state level. Now, to remind the board and the public, come and go on this stand. To remind the board and the public, so this is the scope of the work. So there's two terms that you'll see. You'll see the words base scope of work and then you'll see alternative scope of work. So the base work means that this is the work that we are going to be doing. After bids go out and we receive bids, sometimes you have, you have a situation where you have extra monies available, and correct me if I'm wrong by saying this, where you might be able to do some of, some of the ultimate work. So once, when we get, we'll have, we've had some discussions, we'll have further discussions on the alternate work as needed. Now, at the middle school, again, this is the base work, what is going to be done, exterior lighting upgrades. So if you've ever been through any of our buildings in the evening, but especially at middle school, it's very dark, very dark. So we're going to be replacing all, all the integrated lights with the LED fixtures. If you have seen, I'm sure you've seen some buildings with upgrade lights, it makes a tremendous difference. There's also going to be, so the emergency lighting, those are the lights that you, you see in the hallways, that we have a very old system of lights that will all be updated as required. Now, the alternate work, again, this is if, if there is monies left over, these are things that we've discussed throughout in our process, but they are on the alternate list. So these are removing some old controls, some pneumatic controls. That means, you know, it uses an air compressor to turn things on and off. It all still works, but it certainly could be upgraded to, but we do not have a generator at the middle school at the present time. And though we have a basketball court, it could use some, a little TLC, the kids do play there, but that is all on the ultimate scope of work. So the next slide then is the high school. Again, some of the base bids, all the buildings are getting that exterior lighting. Some work on the HVAC and then the locker room, upgrading some of the hot water piping there for the heating, continuing on the base bid of work at the high school. So there'll be a canopy that's at this entrance down at the end of the hall. We do have now the swipe system, which is working very nicely, but at the moment, if someone is there and it's raining and you're waiting, you're standing in the rain, so there'll be a canopy there. When it says isolation of switch rack, again, the terms don't, for everyone, might not mean things. So those are the big towers of computers, you know, of the, the controls of all our computer systems. They need to be in their own air-conditioned space. And at the moment, we have some switch racks that are not in air-conditioned space, which shortens their lifespan quite a bit. So we need to isolate them and put them in air-conditioned. And then, you know, part of the biggie is the library roof skylight replacement. So our roof, our, whatever you want to call it, the translucent roof, it's come to its life and we are going to be replacing that. We will review kind of, you know, in more detail, but as you can see, if you can see there, the entire roof is not going to be see-through anymore. There will be kind of like, for lack of a term, a skylight down the middle and then the rest will be regular roofing. There'll be new lighting in there, there'll be, I believe there'll be some soundproofing and so there, there won't be so much echo in there. If you've ever been in there, it's kind of a tough place to have a meeting because the sound kind of bounces all over the place. Continuing on the base scope of work at the high school. So this, again, this is a big part of it. So the whole front loop is going to be reconfigured and we went over this many times with the support services committee. So the whole front of the high school, because right now, you know, I mean, the buses, as you know, come and go from, you know, they, they come and go from behind the building. This will create a cleaner flow, it'll be safer, it'll be aesthetically more appealing. This school, like a lot, some, a number of schools, there's no, you don't know where the main entrance is of this school.
Improve the profile.
Right, it, it will improve the profile of, of the building. And then we don't need to get into about the sewer pump, I think that speaks for itself. The tennis court resurfacing. So right now, again, most of the board knows it, but the public might not. So we have the tennis courts, which are no longer usable as tennis courts just because of the cracking and the movement over the years. So for the past, wherever many years, really, it houses our buses. So that's going to get a complete kind of refacing. That will be an alter field then. So there'll be, there'll be new fencing, there'll be new lighting, there'll be an alter field so that PE classes and then the sports can utilize that, especially sprint sports, when many times they have to wait a long time to get going. It's actually a pretty big area, so you can have a nice practice field on that in those tennis courts. Now, the alternate scope of work at the high school. The monies are, are available, so some more upgrades or auditorium. And again, what happens throughout the year, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, this is like, sometimes if we are not able to do some of these ultimate things through the project, sometimes we fund them through the general fund, you know, depending on the time of year, if we have the monies. So that would be, as you can see, perhaps new curtains, a little bit more work on the projection booth, putting up an, a upgraded projector, so when we're presenting in there, it's a little cleaner. Again, HVAC upgrades and central administration and then perhaps reconfiguring the back parking lot as far as the lines and, and cleaning it up. Now, that parking lot, you know, there's something that might be in a future project because while it's still safe, it's not in the greatest condition just because of how old it is, the back parking lot. And then finally, at the elementary school, that has, goes back to, again, the exterior lighting. There's quite a bit of HVAC improvements, so there's a lot, still a number of old univents in there and with all the new regulations of how much fresh air you have to have, it's, it's a lot of runs up through to the, through the building of ductwork. So it's, it's pretty involved so that each room is fed correctly the amount of fresh air. And then certainly, as always, there perhaps is going to be a little bit of abatement of some poritiles that are hot with asbestos. The bidding schedule, we are actually about a month ahead of schedule. When we first talked about this, we were thinking about going out to bid in December, but we'll be going out to bid in November, so that we'll have the bids in December so that we can, you know, so that, and that's better for us. So we'll be earlier than most districts, I would think, so we can get the best bids possible, award those bids in January. And then the things that we can start will start in May while students are in school, you know, either, you know, there's some things that can happen while kids are here and it doesn't disturb anyone and then really get rolling in the summer. And that was what we went over with, the support staff, support services.
Any questions?
Any questions on?
Well, it's very exciting.
Yes, no, it is.
And these plans going to SED, what's the SED status? Approved?
No, everything's been approved. It's all approved. Yep.
We're just prepping to bid, what year is November?
Going out to bid November.
That bid for the loop, is it, that, does that include the electronic signage?
I believe it does, a new sign out front, yep. So we'll have a new electronic sign, so, not that there's anything wrong with the signage there, but a little old school.
Still programmed. With graphics and rhythm.
Yes, I mean, you can, but they have graphics now, you, 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 you know, if you don't know where you're going and if you've never been here before, you can drive right by, you don't even know it's a school until you're past it. Like, oh, there's a school.
Most firehouses have more advanced technology.
Not anymore.
Not anymore.
So that's everything, Mr. Bro.
Any questions for the superintendent? Okay, we'll move on.
Great.
The Board of Education, new business stipulation of agreement, Highland Central School District and PA. Be resolved, the Board of Education, one recommendation of superintendent, proof the attached stipulation of agreement between Highland Central School District and Highland Administration Association, which reflects language change in Article II, which is entitled Benefits. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Ed, seconded by Camille. Discussion?
Again, this was just because today, we officially switched to NICE from OU Bosse's Health. And it actually specifically says in their contract, it mentioned that they have OU. So to properly change them, we just need to change the wording, so really just change it from OU to NICE, that way we're in violation of their contract.
Okay, anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Close, so Carrie. Old business, just FYI, our next meeting on October 15th, we'll be at the elementary school. Do we have a start time lately, so do we establish to do a quick tour of that?
Yes. Do you feel that 6 o'clock is too soon and you are going to debate about executive?
Do you want to do executive after the meeting? Do a tour?
I think we just have to do executive after the meeting and do the tour at 6:00.
All right. So 6:00 PM tour, 7:00 PM meeting.
With, and, is 6:45, 6:50 perhaps to do the pictures? So will that be okay with everybody? You will be here that day, right? Everybody will be in attendance.
Everybody will be here that day because you called it off tonight because Sue was ill. So hopefully we have everybody on board after.
Last year when somebody couldn't make it.
Was it twice last year?
Yes.
No, it wasn't.
But I was saying.
I was here the first one. It was the second one that I couldn't be here, just saying.
So it'll be 6:00 PM.
6:00 PM, 6:50 for photos and 7:00 and then executive.
And Joel and Mr. Dugan will be there.
We'll do the same at the middle school on the November 12th.
Yes. And then, right?
Support service committee, any update? Okay, anything for the good and welfare of the district?
How's the question?
Yes, sir.
I was just thinking about it and it, it's on the, about the project, um, footprint of tennis courts. I knew a lot of square footage is on that. I looked at that and I really quick picked the numbers.
Off the top of my head, I don't recall the, the actual footprints, but I will get those measurements to you.
Just, I mean, especially when we're at all with the surface of the, and I just want to have that out there, what the, what the number is.
Okay.
So that we don't.
Yep, no problem.
What are we doing? We're putting dirt fields in, you know, you know what I'm saying?
Right, it's about 180 by 125. So what you've got for, like, 178 for?
I don't have to last to do the both of that.
No, you just got, the long end, one at 78, the short end 125.
I thought it was about 8,000.
22,000.
24?
Yeah, 22.5, I got with those. So there are no such shorts, just that one area?
Just that one area, yes.
Anything else? I have one thing I haven't had opportunity to speak with the superintendent. If you recall several years ago, the elementary school, a few of the staff members that were involved in building of the two playgrounds, that committee has some excess funds and they had talked to me about a pavilion, the elementary school, which started about two years ago with Deb Monahan.
Yes.
And I think you're probably aware of that. Tilda Del Fourneau has contacted me several weeks ago. I would like to bring it with the support service committee, meeting with her superintendent and the support service committee and then bring it back to the board, what they, what their intentions are, how much money they have in their fund and how we can proceed to get it completed. Open air pavilion, similar to the one that's up here for the three students that were killed in action, that type of design, open air, so they can have classes sometimes outside if the sun's not beating on them, after school activity, whatever it may be. I think adjacent to the playground that's here now. I will get some time and dates together and contact the support service and.
Yeah, Tilda had mentioned that to me, so I said absolutely, I'll be there whenever you want me to. Okay.
So I would also, just to dovetail, I don't believe that our playgrounds are complete. I would love to see the development of a middle school program. Those kids still like to go outside, they still swing and play and, you know, I just think, I know that the property is tight there, but I also know if the right minds get around the table, we can, you know, possibly do something.
The junction of that, we're going to have to slow down the building, the building at all. I wonder if it might be good to create a future support and see if we can incorporate learning stations that may open it up to possibility of grants or something like that.
Yeah, we could brainstorm during the, the, the first meeting and then bring some scoops on in an actual, actual place of the middle school.
The ideal placement so it doesn't impact access, you know, or any.
Well, I think it's not going to be, what I originally saw would be on the south side of the playground that's currently there. It would be in that lawn area. It wouldn't impact the asphalt or field.
There will be a field there, right?
Yeah, it wouldn't impact the kind of lower end of it.
Yeah, 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 there's space there. There's room.
Yeah, it's not a big footprint.
Like a field there, they actually put up tents to.
Truth be told, that's soggy until the spring, that, that area, so putting up a building, maybe a little drainage.
Yep. Okay, anything else for good welfare of the district? Okay, we'll open the meeting up to public comment.
Happy October.
Did you get the Monday message? It was the 90s, it's just that way.
Yeah. Did you put it on the list? She gave the Monday message?
Carly is working on it, a little, yeah.
Very special that list, takes some time to get on.
I, I left that out of my, I don't want to make.
Apparently, if you talk about messages going off, it resets the robo.
Really?
And then it, it goes all the way back to the beginning. So if there's any input.
Nothing makes people happier.
A third time.
This is a big fight in my family.
So what happened, so I know.
35 and seven-year-old, somebody talks and it goes back to the beginning.
Oh, we all get into a fight.
Takes it as input and it resets it back.
Oh, I didn't know that.
That's all the time.
They want to make sure that you're hearing.
The great eight from the 90s. Now, I have to say, I'm going to, you know, the 90s, it didn't seem like that was much going on in the 90s for me. So I said it would, Michael, it was the decade of Michael Jordan. Pokemon was huge in the 90s. And then I talked about Titanic, the movie Titanic, that I, I couldn't believe that I was going into a movie where I know exactly what's going to happen at the end, yet it's still definitely happening. The, we, we love to hate the Macarena, the Macarena was huge in the 90s. Beanie Babies, and how much money did people spend investing in Beanie Babies?
How much?
Fanny packs, it was the decade of the fanny packs.
The Ford was terrific.
They're coming back, they're making a comeback. It's not just muscleheads in the gym anymore. The Tamagotchis, now my kids had those. Tamagotchi was electronic virtual pet. They might still have them even, but they were very big in the 90s. And you had to feed them. If you didn't feed them, they would die.
The first one is still got it.
Yeah.
Remember in the 80s they started.
And then the beginning of the internet, AOL, America Online was the big.
You've got.
Some people still have.
Those discs are actually worth money now, from what used to get every week in the knowledge.
Oh, really? Yeah, I threw away.
So, Miriam, you want to hear all that every Monday?
Sure, why not?
Just don't talk about it.
If you say something, we'll replay it.
You can laugh. Let it go to your reporter. Let it go to your recorder. That's what people dominate.
If they want the live broadcast. They want it hot off the press.
Okay.
Okay, we're in public comment. No more public comment. We're closed public comment. Need a motion to adjourn to go back into the executive session for discussion of the superintendent's contract. Have a motion, please. Motion by Camille, second by Mike. All of favor?
Aye.
Close, so Carrie. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.